Good evening. Welcome to Grand Blank Township Board Meeting for Tuesday, October 28th. If we could all rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, the freedom of speech, liberty, and justice for all.
Clark Robertson, would you please call the roll?
I would be happy to call the roll, Mr. Supervisor. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Myself, of course, I'm here. Treasurer Yancho?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Fike?
Here.
Trustee Hugo?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Seven members present, a quorum.
Thank you. And now I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Fike?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Yancho.
Motion by Fike, supported by Yancho. On the agenda. Trustee White?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Yancho?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. I think somebody may have bumped one of the light switches just over there, but anyways. So anyways, what I'd like to do is we're going to move into public comment at this time. I'd like to make a statement prior to that. So a couple of weeks ago, through an unimaginable tragedy, I was reminded once again how incredible this community truly is and how fortunate I am to call Grand Blank home. We saw neighbors helping neighbors, people doing whatever they could to support one another, and I'm reminded of that spirit every day, especially when I see those "better together" signs and when I pass our township employees, first responders, and when I look out tonight and see all of you here. We are truly better together. This evening, we want to hear your genuine concerns and listen to you, but let's do it respectfully. Personal attacks don't advance your concerns. They don't move our township forward. Let's remember what unites us, and let's honor this community by how we conduct ourselves tonight. In two weeks, we will have a full presentation at our regularly scheduled board meeting to discuss in full the current operations of our fire department and other potential models of both completely career, full-time departments, and combination departments, and everything in between. In just a moment, I'd like to take a moment of silence to remember again the hundreds of victims of this church tragedy and encourage each of you to reflect during this time, not only on our shared values and on compassion and on what it truly means to be better Thank you. And when you come up, I'll call you up. I'm not sure what order these are in, but Ms. Hugo, you've asked, go first?
Please.
And now, just a reminder that we're asking everybody to keep their comments to the three minutes or less. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Hugo, and I have been a Grand Blank Township resident for 24 years. It has been one month since a horrific event at the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. One month since our lives were forever changed. Can you pause the timer? I'm just kidding. It's been one month since our lives were forever changed. Thank you. One month since these brave men and women risked their own lives to save others in our community. One month since our community became better together. To the first responders, your courage and strength are truly incredible, and I couldn't be prouder to live and serve in a community filled with individuals who take such pride in everything they do. The firefighters hold a very special place in my heart. For several years, I took my son Ben to the fire department almost daily to visit all of his fire buddies. I'm sure we may have annoyed you at times, but you're always kind, patient, and welcoming. So thank you all for that. To the firefighters who once detected a small carbon monoxide leak in our basement. Thank you. Without that visit, the outcome could have been very different. That experience reminded me just how vital your work truly is. What I want to say from the bottom of my heart is thank you. Thank you for always being there, for your bravery, your compassion, and your unwavering commitment to Grand Blank Township. To Chief Gent and the entire fire department, I see you, I hear you, and I support you. As a trustee, I promise to continue doing what I believe is best for this community, not only for our residents, but also for every dedicated employee who serves it with pride and integrity. To the residents, this past week has been very challenging and very embarrassing, not only for me, but for our entire community. I'm here tonight because I have integrity and I have a voice, but more important, I'm here to do what's best for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Barbreen. Barbreen? She in the room?
Perhaps outside.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Barbreen. I've lived in the township for 10 years, and I'm a fifth-generation firefighter in my family, and...
I can just ask you to make sure you speak up, because I'm not sure if everybody can hear you in the back room.
Move the microphone closer, please.
I'm sorry.
And I have several questions, rather. We, after the fire at the church, I'd like to know why we heard nothing from the fire chief. Their response was equally as important. And I wanted to know if your board members, if you're familiar with the Assistance to Firefighter Grant or a SAFER Grant for the fire department? Are you guys aware of that grant?
We aren't going to, tonight, we're not going to be going back and forth. We'll take your comments and questions.
Okay.
And we will...
So FEMA puts out...
I think, I'm not sure. They're working on it.
Okay. FEMA offers two substantial grants to fire departments every year. One is an Assistance to Firefighter Grant that helps with equipment. The other one is a SAFER Grant. I write grants for fire departments. I reached out to Chief Gent and asked him, and offered to help with the SAFER Grant, and was informed the township was not applying for it. And I would also like to know why. And I also believe that one of the goals of every municipality is to increase their tax revenue. And I also, lastly, want to know if letting Chief Gent go or not supporting his recommendations to the township and the community, if you guys are willing to accept the responsibility and liability if any of these first responders get hurt.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to start with this. I voted for all of you. I was happy to do that. When all of your names were on the ballot, I voted for each and every one of you. I'm pretty disappointed right now in how this is all being handled. You've been dishonest, disingenuous. You are more concerned with public image than with giving your community any sort of peace of mind. Your most important community assets are asking for support, and you're not supporting them. You've rehired a man that was fired. A whistleblower act or not, he's clearly unfit for the position. I'd like to explain why, I'd like you to explain why you'd rather attempt to fire a man with experience, integrity, skill, understanding, and overall capability than hire more firefighters or listen to the complaints and problems that are coming directly from the department that are dealing with them. You have a team of people that are communicating with you, and you would rather let him go than listen to any of that. You're more than happy to increase a millage to pave a dirt road where people are already speeding in a place they don't need to be. Bicentennial doesn't need a paved road, but you're completely comfortable with the fire department explaining to you that their staffing is inappropriate, and we're not going to do anything about that. All I'm asking of you guys is for some introspection and some understanding to the fact that you were all hired by us. This isn't a unilateral space, and your decisions affect everyone in the community, not just you, not just the budget, and not just the firefighters, that we owe more than we could ever possibly give them. And just as a final note, turning off comments on your social media when the community disagrees with you is a wildly inappropriate choice. You think it makes you look bad to leave the comments on?
We're not, we're not going to have applause after each comment, please.
It looks so much worse for you guys to shut the comments off. I don't know whose decision that was. Wrong move. I have lost a lot of trust in this entity as a whole, and I will be looking at things a lot more closely moving forward.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, township officials. Thank you for the time. Greg Weisbarth, I'm the Third District Vice President for the Michigan Professional Firefighters Union. Grand Blank Local 4962 is one of the locals that I proudly serve. Nothing was said about pointing fingers, but it's time now for the actions to take. And it's called safe staffing. Does it cost money? Absolutely it does. To pay people, healthcare, it costs money. We're not unrealistic about that. But what we are also not unrealistic about is our safety and the safety of these guys that are out here. To put one man on an engine company is unacceptable. I don't know if you've ever drove a fire truck. Ever noticed the blind spots in those, when you put one person on that? And what can one man do when he rolls up on the scene? The tragic event that happened here in Grand Blank was an exposure to the staffing levels that have always been there, and it exposed the entire community that we are not staffed properly. The members that work here, the proud members, the dedicated members that work here, are not your enemy. They are your ally. There are very smart individuals that work here. We've heard comments about the SAFER Grants. They can help you with those. The AFG Grants, they can help you with purchasing apparatus or equipment. That also helps your budget. We're talking about, you talked, you're going to have a plan coming up forward here in two weeks. Geographical information studies, that is done by the International Associations of Firefighters for any local that requests that study to be done, and it's done at no cost. No cost to you. It's one of the services that we afford all the firefighters across the United States and Canada. Look to your allies. Your allies are sitting out here. They're on duty 24/7. They can assist you. They're not out here to raise ruckus and then to get to where we have to consider what's protected union activities. We should never even go down that road. If you work together, and they have more than willing, I do know that, reached out to you to sit down to discuss these issues and how can we do them in a collaborative manner, looking at budgets, considering all the impacts, they'll work with you. They're incredibly talented people. It's all we're here for. You know, sometimes the word "union" gets a bad name. We're a brotherhood. We help each other. We help communities. They're here to help you. Ask them. They'll step right up to the plate. They're some of the bravest people, kindest people you're ever going to meet.
Thank you. Thank you. Jamie Judd?
Happy First Responders Day, everybody. Board members, I stand before you today to address the fundamental question. What kind of fire chief does Grand Blank Township want? When you hired me, I was explicit about who I am. I told the superintendent, the police chief, and the HR director that I believed in transparent communication, collaborative problem-solving, and open, transparent communication, and advocating for necessary change. I warned them clearly, if you don't want someone who will push for operational improvements, do not hire me. You hire me anyway. I've done exactly what I said I would do. Now I'm being told I'm not the right fit, because I've advocated for the very priorities outlined in your strategic plan. The 2025 through 2028 strategic plan that you approved explicitly identified 911 EMS response times as a key focus area. It calls for fire departments' transition to a response model that includes medical response. I didn't invent these priorities. They were in your documented plans. Yet when I advocate for them, I'm suddenly not on the same page as the board. Here's what Superintendent Lamotta himself has admitted in meetings with me. I don't disagree with your recommendations in the slightest. I think that's where we're heading. Nobody I've ever known the fire science better than Jamie Judd. We're not in compliance with NFP 1710. You're right. He agrees with my recommendations, acknowledges my expertise, and admits we're not meeting safety standards. Then what's the real issue? The real issue emerged on October 10th, when I suddenly was informed of a united front requirement that I must publicly support standards and board positions regardless of these professional standards or community safety. This requirement appears nowhere in my contract or job posting, in interview discussions, or any written policy. No fire service professional with integrity would accept a position that prohibits them from identifying operational gaps that affect community safety. But here's what sealed my fate. When Union President Jeremy Oxford exercised his federally-protected right to communicate with you about staffing concerns, Superintendent Lamotta warned me to require notification before any union communications. When I explained that would violate federal labor law, I was placed on administrative leave. Let me be clear, I will not violate federal labor law. I will not interfere with protected union activities. That makes me not, if that makes me not the right fit, then this township's expectations are incompatible with both legal requirements and professional ethics. The superintendent claims the budget has increased 92% since 2020.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry. Thank you. We're not, we're not going to applaud after... We need to pause the meeting. We will, but we're not going to continue this.
My name is Sherri Martin. I'm a Genesee County citizen. I'm from Davison. I served on the Richfield Township Board, and I also am a nurse. And why am I here tonight? Because I, being a nurse, I care about people. I care about the citizens. I don't care where you live, okay? But what I will tell you, first of all, before I get into this, I do want to give my condolences to the Grand Blank Township citizens for what they've been through. Now, what I have to say about this is, I know, being on the township board, okay? You get so much money coming in and have so much money going out. What I would ask these Grand Blank Township citizens is to check into where all this money is going. What is their tax money being spent on? I don't know if these meetings are televised, if the township citizens, because I know a lot of them are working a lot, they don't, may not be able to attend the meetings, but I would ask them, do they know how many fire calls there are per month? Do they know how trained and how many firefighters are on those fire trucks? And I am asking the Grand Blank Township citizens to get informed, get involved. You don't need your taxes raised, okay? I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, I know what I was told is Grand Blank Township just gave a lot of money to the parks. Well, you know, that's wonderful. I like nice parks, too, but if my house is on fire and there's an emergency and I need trained firefighters, guess what? I don't care about the teeter-totter in the park, okay? I want Davison, if we need backup, to know that the areas around us have the equipment and have the trained firefighters that they need. As a nurse, I know what it's like to work long hours. I know what it's like to have too much on you and a shift to take care of, and I also know what it's like to work without equipment. So what I would say is that firefighters across the region are facing growing challenges from elected officials who make critical decisions without understanding the realities of emergency response, and it's time for our voices to be heard. Come on, Grand Blank Township, they're saying that you're all together. Make that real. Support your chief that stood up for you and is fighting for your safety.
Thank you.
Want to say it again?
And then Anna Mattson will be after Shirley.
Hello. Hello. My name is Shirley Schinabarger. I'm a resident of Grand Blank and a registered nurse currently striking at Henry Ford Genesis. A lot of my time spent is on Baldwin Road. I've gotten to know quite a few of the firefighters, and unfortunately, on September 28th, we really got to know them. That was a tragic event that happened, and it has fueled all of us as, I'm not a first responder, I respect our first responders, I'm a nurse, but the staffing issues, this isn't about me, but it's kind of funny how corporate, corporations want to save money on staffing in the hospitals, and now our own communities want to save money for what we need in this community. Like the millages in August, the community voted no for parks and rec. They voted yes for fire. I love our PD department, but they've got plenty of funding. What about fire? When I'm on the line and I see a truck go, and then we see another truck go, we're questioning, what happens if something else happens? Because we know darn well how many people are in that station, and then I'm told, well, they can maybe use city for that. Why can't we just hire staff? And I believe that's what Chief Judd was trying to do, is make the department better, to make his people better, to make the community better. And I don't know who you are, Dennis, but how do you get the power to say no? How do you get the power to make these decisions? I feel like it should be like a board. I feel like the people should make those decisions, not an individual based on emotion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And now Anna Mattson?
I'm Anna Mattson, and I'm here tonight as a Holly resident. I am here because when our community suffered the tragic Holly fire, Grand Blank showed up for us. And when Grand Blank faced its own tragedy, we showed up for you. That's what true community looks like. Now, I've spoken with many residents, and from what I've seen, this board has allowed the superintendent to operate with nearly unwieldy power. Too often, decisions are made by him and rubber-stamped by you. Let's remember, this is the same superintendent who was fired in 2020, then sued the township for wrongful termination, and was later rehired in exchange for dropping the lawsuit, allegedly, of course. Many people would call that extortion, and now you trust him to lead your township. In 2022, his salary was $119,000 before benefits. Now it's $203,000, and next year, he's requesting $215,000. That's nearly a doubling of pay in just three years. You don't even see that in the private sector. For comparison, a United States senator makes $174,000 a year. I'm not saying public servants shouldn't make, I'm not saying public service should make someone poor, but it shouldn't make them rich either, especially when your fire department is struggling. I've looked through your budget reports. There is money, plenty of it. The issue is how it's being prioritized. This board does not work for the superintendent. He works for you. You hire him, you set his budget, you create the ordinances he has to execute, and you can fire him. Our founding fathers separated powers for a reason, to create checks and balances, not to let one person act as a dictator. So yes, the staffing crisis and morale issues are on him, but they're also on you, because you've allowed this imbalance of power to continue. And this issue isn't just because of this board or the superintendent. It's on residents, too. This township has almost 40,000 residents. In the village of Holly, we have 6,000 residents, and we have more people show up to meetings and watch meetings online than you do. Yes, the public is here today, but where were you for years before this? This could have all been prevented if you voted for the right people and kept these ones accountable. The public outpour changed the tune of this meeting. Imagine what this town would look like if the public showed up more. The fire department shows up for you when you need them. It's time you show up for them. If this board acts against the interests of public safety, it's up to the public to recall these members and institute a board who will protect people and represent the people, not unelected bureaucrats. Finally, I will do what this board should have done tonight. I want to thank Chief Judd for his leadership and for the entire fire staff for standing their ground for their residents.
Alex Newton? We're not going to tolerate applause. We'll ask you to leave if you're going to continue. And that goes for you in the back. I know who it is.
Alex Newton, was it? Good evening. My name is Alex Newton. I'm speaking on behalf of the part-time firefighters. I'm the union president. I'm here to express our frustration. We don't think you guys know what's truly going on. There's been social media reports that indicate that we have inadequate staffing. I can tell you, that's a lie. I was one of the first people on at the church fire. We had five people. We had a three-month-on-the-job, 19-year-old kid inside that building by himself for at least five to eight minutes before we could get in there to help him, because we had other things we were trying to assess and handle before we could get inside with five people. For a church that had possibly 200 people, and we have five people, you guys, somebody wants to release saying that we have adequate staffing? It's a lie. Then we want to go down that Facebook post, and they say that we spend so much money in staffing or equipment. Go look at any one of our fire trucks after you leave this meeting. Go look at any one of our fire trucks after you leave this meeting. The sensors are duct taped, alarms are going off. We just hit silence. The ladder truck, we can't drive it. We can't practice with it. It's only used for emergencies, per the deputy chief. So where's this money being spent that you guys are talking about? We're not asking for new recliners. We're not asking for TV. We're asking for safety for the public. This has to stop. We kept saying, what are we waiting for, people to die? Here it is. When is this going to change? Are you guys aware this fire station right here on the north side closes at midnight? All the citizens on the north side are still paying taxes and expect us to respond, yet the station's closed. And then we go down to, thank God, Chief Gent moved it up to four people. Before that, it was three after midnight. What are we going to do with three people when we show up to a house fire with a family trapped? We're not doing anything like we promised the citizens. There's a survey that put out 93% of superintendent at every union meeting we have. You should wear that on your arm as a badge of honor. Turn around and ask these citizens, would you still vote 93%? The answer's no. You guys lied to them. I don't think the board did. I think the superintendent did. And that's where we ask you guys, make the decision. Chief Gent is a guy for the job. He's got an open-door policy. He's done nothing but amazing things for this department. Let's decide who were in a fire. And we all know that answer. I'm not calling people out. Just make the right thing, ask questions, come talk to us. That's all we want to have a conversation. Thank you.
Greg Allen. Is Greg Allen in here? Greg Allen? Okay. All right.
He has realized you have audio delay from this room to that room, right?
No.
Yeah. You can hear him still talking.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks.
Good evening, board members and citizens of Grand Blank Township and visitors from far and wide. My name is Greg Allen, and I'm the business agent for the Grand Blank Township, part-time firefighters, and I'm here to speak on their behalf. Grand Blank Township firefighters are proud to stand before and beside Fire Chief Jamie Gent. Since day one, Chief Gent has led with integrity, respect, and genuine commitment to the department members and the community they serve. He listens before he leads, and he makes decisions based on what keeps firefighters and residents safe. Chief Gent has prioritized a strong working relationship with the unions, and he made it clear that any new full-time positions that come about within the part-time ranks, they will be offered these positions first. It shows his values in his members, and he wants to grow this department by investing in those already serving this community. Safety has been at the top of Chief Gent's list from the moment he arrived. He took swift action to move the firefighters out of this station here due to the conditions at Station One, refusing to let them spend another night in an environment that may be harmful to their health. These changes weren't delayed or debated. He did what was right, not only for the members, but for their members' families. Chief Gent has demonstrated the same urgency and compassion regarding mental health of this membership. The events of September 28th, as we're all aware of, were the most tragic this department has ever faced. And Chief Gent didn't just acknowledge that pain. He put real support in place. He stood up for the members as people and not just as firefighters. Leadership isn't measured by titles or policies. It is measured by trust, action, and the ability to lift others up. Chief Gent has earned the trust and respect through every decision he has made in his short time as chief here with the township. The men and women of Grand Blank Township Fire Department stand behind Chief Gent because he stands behind them. He is the right leader for this department and for this community, and they are proud to support him every step of the way. Thank you.
Carol Popovich.
Good evening, everyone. I have a couple of concerns. First of all, I know many of you. I served as Dr. Lipe's secretary at the Grand Blank Schools for considerable amount of time, and I was honored to be the recording secretary of the Grand Blank Board of Education. One of the things that I was most proudest about was transparency. We... Dr. Lipe had a memo that went to his board. It was the good, the bad, and the ugly. There was never an issue that the board was unaware of, nor was there an issue that the board would not listen to. It didn't matter if it was a staff member coming before the board and talking about an issue. It wasn't... It didn't matter if it was students. It didn't matter if it was a parent. Everyone was welcome to come before the board and give their opinion regarding any kind of service or curriculum or study that they were involved in. I can tell you Mrs. Hugo's husband, Brian, was an advocate. And I can also tell you, one of the proudest moments of the Grand Blank Board was when the students did a walkout at the high school, and the board was proud that they knew their First Amendment's rights, that they knew there was no violence, and they got their point across because their voice was heard. What concerns me is that the chief has been silenced over the tragedy at the LDS church. There was lots of press conferences, but there was nothing showing the chief. And the silence, for me, is frightening, because he was trying to tell you all the truth, that the residents of Grand Blank Township were understaffed. And that, as also a mother of a Grand Blank firefighter, that's terrifying, that you would risk their lives and those of the people who are residing in your township because you want to save a few bucks? Why is the PD budget reported at $10 million something, and the fire department budget is 2.3 something? What? I'm not sure of the figures, but it's inadequate. Why would the PD, who covers the exact same area as the fire department, be told they aren't going to be funded? They help at accidents at every location, expressways, and through the city. They have to leave at a moment's notice for a fire call, and they're doing mutual aid. So my concern is, where... How mu... Pardon me?
Time is up.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Bennett. So if anybody here, if you want to fire, please.
Michael Hertzberg. Is Michael here?
Good evening. My name is Michael Hertzberg. I'm the secretary of the IFF Local 4962 Union. I stand before you today on a matter of public concern, the department's staffing levels and the safety of our community. In the six short months that Chief Gent has been with the Grand Blank Township, he has proven himself to be an excellent leader, an effective manager, and a genuine mentor. He has unified our full-time and part-time personnel into one cohesive department, and morale is at an all-time high. His compassion and support for our firefighters, both during the recent church event and in the weeks that followed, were remarkable. Chief Gent represents the very best of this township, and our members are grateful to have him continuing with us. From day one, the chief has made staffing a top priority. For years, our firefighters have voiced concerns about the number of firefighters on shift. Staffing directly affects both firefighter safety and public safety. When we talk about staffing, we're not referring to the total number of employees on payroll. We're referring to how many are on duty and available to respond at any given time. The current model is not safe and is nowhere near meeting the nationally-recognized benchmarks of NFPA 1710. NFPA 1710 is a standard for the organization and deployment of career fire departments and provides the guidelines for staffing and response times. It requires a minimum of four firefighters on the first-arriving engine, which should arrive within four minutes of the call for a fire incident, and a full initial alarm assignment of 15 firefighters for residential fire arriving on scene within eight minutes. Before the tragic events, September 28th, Station One and Two were each staffed with two people from 8:00 AM to midnight. And at midnight, Station One closes, leaving Station Two with only three personnel. Following that tragedy, Chief Gent added one firefighter each shift, so we had three in three at each station during the day and only four at night at Station Two. This was done to help relieve stress and promote firefighter wellness. Unfortunately, the 2026 budget does not provide funding to sustain the staffing level, even though it needs to be permanent. Chief Gent has worked tirelessly to increase staffing, including seeking a safer grant. While that effort was initially supported by the township, it was never submitted because, quote, "the board didn't support it." Our members truly appreciate the township's investment in a new fire station and a new aerial apparatus. But the truth is, our most vital investment is people. It's time for the township to consider investing in personnel rather than apparatus. To our township board members, our union board reached out to you directly, requesting a meeting to share our concerns and our vision for a stronger and safer department. This offer still stands, and we sincerely hope that you will take the opportunity to meet with us, listen to the community, and let's work together properly staffing our department. Together, we can ensure that our firefighters and our community remain safe, strong, and best serve the community. We are better together.
Thank you. Brent Connell.
Good evening. My name is Brent Connell. I'm currently the president of the Michigan State Firemen's Association. I probably proudly have served in the fire service for 36 years, and for the past two and a half years, I've had the privilege of serving as a firefighter in Grand Blank Township. I'm here tonight to express my support for Chief Gent and to respectfully ask for his reinstatement as fire chief. When I was hired here, I was honestly shocked to learn on how this department operated from 8:00 AM to midnight, responding to every call of service in the township with only two firefighters on apparatus. And I immediately raised concerns about how unsafe the staffing model was and how it failed to meet NFPA standards. I was told this is how it's always been done, and the current administration was fine with it. Then came September 28th, the date that none of us will ever forget. The unthinkable happened. Yet the men and women of the Grand Blank Township Fire Department responded with the same pride, courage, and dedication they always bring, even under unsafe conditions, and I applaud each and every one of them. After that tragic day, Chief Gent took a hard look at our department staffing and made the decision to increase the minimum staffing to three firefighters per shift on duty apparatus. While this still doesn't meet the national standard of four, it's a significant step forward, and more importantly, it has lifted the morale across our department. You, as the board, may never fully understand the emotions we experienced after that day, the sense of defeat and heartbreak. There isn't a single firefighter in this department who ever wants to experience a loss of life on their watch, no matter what the circumstances. Chief Gent recognized the shortcomings and took action, action that makes Grand Blank Township a safer place to live, work, and serve. I strongly urge this board to recognize what Chief Gent has done. He's been looking out for the future of this department and ultimately for the safety and well-being of the residents and his firefighters. He deserves your support, your trust, and your appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Sorenson. Marty Sorenson. Okay.
Good evening. It's come to my attention that some of you are not fully understanding the positive changes that this department has experienced. And if anyone believes that we haven't moved forward for the better under Chief Gent, then you haven't been paying attention. So tonight, I want to speak to those changes from the perspective of those closest to the operations of this department who see the results of his leadership in real time. When Chief Gent arrived, morale was at an all-time low. We were exhausted, discouraged, and disconnected. Many of us questioned why we were still here. This was the environment that we were working in. But that's not where we are today. Today, this department does not feel different. It is different. And the difference is undeniable. Morale, pride... Morale and pride have returned in a way many of us weren't sure we would ever see again. Standards have been raised, and accountability is back, but not to punish, but to remind us of the professionalism this department should stand for. For the first time, our mental health and well-being are being treated as a priority instead of an afterthought. And here's something no one would have predicted a year ago. Firefighters are stepping up to pursue EMS educations and licensing, not because anyone demanded it, but because we finally believe in the direction we're heading and the future that's being built here. Even longstanding issues that have held us back, like the old full-time versus part-time divide, were addressed swiftly and effectively. And that wasn't luck, it was leadership. From day one, Chief Gent has been transparent about his goals, his expectations, and his vision for the future here. He communicates, he listens, he makes us feel seen and heard, and he trusts us to do our jobs. Because of that, pride, unity, and purpose have returned to this department. I've heard the statement that Chief Gent is, quote, "unwilling to operate within the current service model." But let's think about that for a moment. If the service model is outdated or failing the community, isn't it his duty not to accept that? Why criticize the chief for refusing to operate in a system that isn't serving the people we swore to protect? That's not... That's not resistance, it's leadership. And his impact wasn't slow or gradual, it was immediate. In fact, Supervisor Bennett, within the first two weeks, his impact was so clear that I emailed you directly to state that hiring Chief Gent was one of the best decisions that made for this department in the last 10 years at least. Everything this department has asked for, unity, direction, accountability, support, pride, he's delivering. If the goal was to find a leader who could elevate this department, unite it, modernize it, and restore pride, that mission was accomplished the day you hired Chief Jamie Gent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Hudson.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Hudson. I am a resident here in Grand Blank for the last 14 years. Chief, wherever you're at, you're a hero, ma'am. Every one of you in uniform in here is a hero. And we should all be taking our hats off to you every single day that you go to work. You reminded me earlier, Mr. Bennett. You said, "Let's remember what brought us here together." Patriots brought us here together. What's happening is a travesty. I would take eight of him over any of you any day. You guys need to remember and understand, you do what we want you to do. You work for us. We can vote you out anytime, anyway. We hired you. This town has come together tonight because they are standing on his behalf to support him. Why aren't you getting on board? I have seen fire trucks at an accident with no paramedics on site. What if that was one of you? Would you want to lay there in pain, suffering, waiting for a paramedic to get there? Or would you rather have them there when the fire truck shows up? What if your house was to burn down? While you cower and run out of your home, these guys are running into it to protect you, to save you. And after the worst tragedy that Grand Blank has seen in I don't know how many years, you want to put this man on administrative leave? Maybe take his job from him? I'm going to tell you right now, as a candidate for governor in the state of Michigan, if you fire this man, I get over 300,000 views on Facebook and social media every single day. I will make sure these seats are empty this time next year. Thank you.
Kenny Jacobson.
It's been a while. Seven years ago, I left Grand Blank after I raised a safety concern, and then I was eventually run out of this township. Hi, Dennis. I don't know, Chief Gent, I don't. But I do know every single one of these guys in here, and they are my brothers. I fought fire for 18 years. Safety is the number-one thing. They run into fires. If you're going to make it unsafe even more, why are they doing it? They have families. Look at all the kids that are in here. What's the reason for that? You can't take safety out of it just because you don't like it. And if you're going to take this chief away just because he doesn't fit in with you guys, I know where I'd be voting next year. But I don't have to. I'm gone. Thank you.
Brandon Barcoviac. Brandon?
Hello. My name is Brandon Barcoviac, and I have served with the Grand Blank Fire Department from 2006 until 2022. A few other firefighters, along with myself, left the department in 2022 due to a lack of leadership from the previous fire chief. Although I am no longer part of the fire department, I am still part of this community as I have lived here my whole life and now raise my family here. I stay in contact with a handful of firefighters that still serve on the department, and I have heard nothing but outstanding things from them about Chief Gent since he was hired back in April. When Chief, when Chief Gent was hired, he took an oath to faithfully, faithfully perform the duties of the office of fire chief for the township of Grand Blank according to the best of his ability. This is exactly what he has been doing since the day he was hired. It is nice to see the Township Fire Department finally has a chief that cares about the safety of the community and the firefighters. Unfortunately, Chief Gent is being punished for doing exactly what he was hired to do. And I believe that if Chief Gent's contract is terminated, the township will lose more firefighters, and the staffing crisis will get even worse. This will in turn make it increasingly more dangerous for the firefighters who stay on duty and also for the community they serve in. If Chief Gent is let go and firefighters do leave in wake of that decision, I expect that each and every one of you board members will take full responsibility if a firefighter or someone in the community gets hurt or killed due to staffing shortages. My last question is, why was Gent not okay last week to serve, but for some reason now he's good to serve? Thank you.
Thank you. Jake Sifferman? Having trouble reading, but I think it's Jake?
My name's Jacob Sifferman. I'm vice president of our part-time union. I've been at this department for 14 and a half years. I was here when we were still on call. When we changed to a full-time department, your firefighters took a pay cut. We took a $3 pay cut from $15 down to $12. We currently make $20 an hour if you have 10 years of service. That seems pretty low to me. We're not in this for the money. The people I work with every day will put their life on the line for every single one of you. They'll support you through everything. What we're asking for is you to support us. These citizens deserve the best. We want to give them the best. Our firefighters are increasing their training. They want to be better. We need the help. We can't do it alone. So we're asking you to please come talk to us. Come put our gear on. Come train with us. See what we're about and see if you can do it with two people. Thank you.
Thank you. Shandell Sorenson?
My name is Shandell Sorenson. I'm a registered nurse with Henry Ford Health here in Grand Blank. I'm currently on strike advocating for safe staffing and a better patient care. Over the past few weeks, I've seen firsthand how much leadership matters, especially in crisis. During this difficult time, our fire chief has been a tremendous source, a tremendous source of support. He has constantly checked on our safety, ensured emergency access, and demonstrated genuine care for the people of this township, even when it wasn't required of him. That speaks volumes about his dedication and integrity. This is the same leader who responded to the mass shooting at the Mormon Church in Grand Blank, showing calm under pressure and courage in the face of tragedy. His leadership had saved lives and steadied our community in one of its darkest moments. As someone who works in, excuse me, in healthcare, I know what short staffing feels like and what happens when leadership is taken away in the middle of a crisis. The results can be devastating. Removing the fire chief now would not only weaken the department, it would put the safety of this entire township at risk. Our fire chief has proven his commitment, commitment to Grand Blank throughout this entire situation, his action, compassion, and courage. I respectfully urge the council to support and retain his position for the sake of our safety and our community's future. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you.
Hello, sir. My name is Jeff Lentz. I'm the president of Dearborn Firefighters Association, IFF Local 412, and I've attended your meeting today to show my support for the Grand Blank Professional Firefighters Union and their arguments and advocacy for safe staffing levels. Without safe staffing levels, the community is at risk, and their lives are at risk. Your firefighters show up day in and day out, report for their shift duty away from their family members, not knowing if they're gonna come home that day. That's a choice we all took when we took this job. We understand the risk that's involved. But without safe staffing, you're exponentially making it a higher risk that they don't come home to their families. So I implore you, adopt safer staffing levels. You hear a lot of talk of 1710 and the national standards, and as we stand in this beautiful township hall today, I bet you this building was built to the National Building Code, where there's standards for electrician work, standards for plumbing work. Why? Because it's safe. It's unsafe not to build this building that way, but yet, you've let your firefighters respond to emergencies in unsafe environments. So I implore you to support them. Give them the adequate staffing. Give them the resources they need, which is people, boots on those trucks responding to your runs. And as for Chief Gent, I've personally known Jamie for the last 24 years. He's a man of high integrity. I assume you guys hired him to be your fire chief based on his profound experience in this position. So I definitely support him in his striving to make this department a modern fire department and to help you move forward to make it safer, not only for the citizens that he swore to protect and the firefighters are sworn to protect, but the firefighters that come in and take the oath that they're gonna protect your citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to, first off, acknowledge that, I know sitting up here in this room tonight, listening to a roomful of people that might seem angry with you, it could be difficult. And so, I wanted to acknowledge that being a strong leader, a lot of times starts with listening. And in a government format that we're at today, we have a forum for everybody to speak on behalf of what they feel and what they think. My name's Adam Farrell. I'm also with the Dearborn Firefighters Association, Local 412, Union Secretary. I've served alongside Chief Gent for six years on the union board and 15 years in the department in Dearborn. What I could tell you about Chief Gent is, he's extremely knowledgeable in this business. He's, obviously, you guys did something right when you hired him. You realize that he's going to bring to the table a new perspective. He's got a lot of knowledge, and I strongly encourage you to take the opportunity tonight with what you've heard and consider listening to Chief Gent and finding that pathway forward. I'm not gonna sit here and pretend that money isn't a difficulty constraint. If every department and every city had unlimited funds, we would always meet these standards. And that's the trouble, is trying to find the funds that we have and what can we put on the table with what we have to work with. And Chief Gent is a partner in this, for this township, and the residents of this township should be proud to have him. And just by the overwhelming support of firefighters that are in here tonight, both from Grand Blank and across the state, it shows this community matters. And the decisions that this board makes moving forward is going to determine the pathway of this community. So I encourage everybody here to listen. I encourage you to work with Chief Gent. I think he's a brilliant mind in the fire service. You're very fortunate to have him, and continue to support your Grand Blank firefighters and work towards finding whatever that resolution is to provide the best staffing to your community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Dennis McGuckin. Some of you know me. I come here as a resident of the township. I'm not representing any political affiliation or any government entity. I'm speaking as a citizen of Grand Blank Township. Been here for 20-something years. Question that hopefully it could be answered maybe at a later time. How much money was taken and given to the parks when we, as a township, shot down the village, I believe in August of this year? The village was shot down. The residents didn't want to fund the park when we had other monetary needs such as the fire department or police department? If that could be answered at a later time, how much money was given to the parks? If we had some money to give the parks, maybe it could have been to the firemen? The board, I believe, Mr. Lamotta, you guys hire what you guys think is the best of the best, right? The best police chief and the best fire chief, right? If you limit their ability, who's in a better position to make recommendations for what's best for me as a citizen? Is it a board member who has no fire experience? Or the fire chief who you hire has got, I don't know him, but it sounds like he's got a exemplary record? Or the fire, or the police chief who's, what's best interest when it comes to public safety? Who's better? Right? If this gentleman, the fire chief, says he needs people and equipment, I would trust him in his word. Who are you, as board members with no fire experience, to question it? Unless you're, yourself has a resume like his. I'm gonna make this quick. We live in a world where evil exists. It walks amongst us every single day. And the only way evil exists is when politicians limit the ability for good men and women, such as a police department or fire department, to do their job. Me being a citizen, I believe you're limiting the safety for all residents, even the residents that pass through Grand Blank Township, and there's a lot of them. I believe that should you let this gentleman go, from what I know, it would be a travesty to the citizens of Grand Blank Township. I think you need to take a bigger look at who's better to make those decisions, what's best for the township residents when it comes to police and fire. So I thank you for your time. I hope that you take into consideration what every member of the fire department, I'm not a fireman, but what the firemen have told you all night long. Okay? Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Grand Blank Township is the oldest community in Genesee County, April 1st, 1833. We're 192 years old, so there have been many people sitting in the seats of you elected officials that have taken the oath of office to serve. Dennis Lamotta did not, was not elected, he was chosen by you. Not one individual at this dais that I know of has any experience like the police and fire departments, who are unique employees of this township. Why? Because they take an oath and put their own lives at stake every single day. And you all saw that on September the 28th, when you and I, every one of you, were watching the TV and all the men and women in the fire department and the police department were out working to save the lives of all those people, men, women, and children, just like your families, in that particular church. You can limit Mr. Lamotta's abilities by state law. He nor, no one at this dais has the experience or the knowledge to resolve the problems that you face. So when you're dealing, especially with police and fire, let them help you make the best decisions by having open discussion with honesty and truthfulness. And 40,000 people in this community are watching you. Thank you.
I'll make this brief, as brief as I can. I can't hide behind my name. I come from a fire chief that served this community for 25 years, a quarter century. Here we go again, 2010 all over again. The voters asked, or voters approved. I helped go door-to-door when I was living out of state. I lived out of state because back in 2004, you couldn't buy a job as a public servant. So with that being said, I moved out of state, came back, helped campaign for this. I was told there was a nepotism policy, and I couldn't come back here to work in Grand Blank. I believe that's still in force, but as we, we continue to move forward, I gotta tell you, emotions aside from everybody, what happened last month was absolutely horrible. And I don't think that anybody in this room would honestly ever want to live through that Having been through, through some tough times with my career working for public service, I still continue to do that. I work for the local government. It, I guess I came here with a little bit of a disgust anyway about the lack of appreciation that our police and fire got for here, and I hope that that changes, and I hope that we look at the mental health of everyone that was there, because there's still a lot of people that are suffering from that. And I hope that we can continue to move forward, and I gotta admit, this is lousy timing to even try to bring this up. So that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Just a reminder that in two weeks, we will have a full presentation and a regularly scheduled board meeting to discuss in full the current operations of our fire department and other potential models, improvements, both going from full career departments, full-time, to combination departments and everything in between. With that, we're gonna move on on our agenda, and next item on the agenda, approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for that?
It's on the move.
Okay. Supported by Mr. Fike?
Motion by Yancho, supported by Fike on the consent agenda. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Treasurer Yancho?
Yes.
Seven-nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Under new business, the board will consider a motion to approve Danielle Pastu as the assessor of record and authorize the superintendent to negotiate an employment agreement with the supervisor and clerk to sign upon successful negotiation of the agreement. And I think we have Ms. Pastu or Ms. Harrington here this evening? First of all, congratulations on, on your achievement of this level of certification with the state. It's not every community that can have somebody that is at that level of accomplishment in our assessing department, so congratulations to you. It's quite a huge accomplishment. Just, just so that everyone is aware, you know, when a municipality reaches a certain size of taxable value, the requirements change in terms of what, who you're required to have in terms of credentialed staff for going over all the assessing records and before they're submitted. And we've been at that level for a few years, and this isn't an easy accomplishment to obtain that, that certification. So, Mr. Lamotta?
Yeah, I'm happy to bring to the board the recommendation for Danielle to be considered as your assessor of record currently. That's contracted out because we had to have a Level 4, was how it was referred to previously, but now the Michigan Master Assessors Officer Certification is required. This is a very extensive program. Danielle has worked on it for over two years, and it's not, it's, I forget how many total MMAOs are in the state. 166. 166, because it's incredibly tough, and they, they, over the last 10 years and about 10 years ago, they started to change the ability for assessors to move their way up and to secure the training to achieve this, and they made it tougher for a reason. And it's a good thing, because if our assessors don't get it right, then everybody here's taxable values don't get assessed appropriately. As you know, we're required to be boots on the ground. 20% of properties every single year have to have boots on the ground and reviewed, and as the director of our assessing, Danielle's been leading our team, but hasn't had the certification to sign our tax rolls, so we've had to contract that out. Happily, we won't have to contract that out anymore. We'll save some funds for the township. And tonight, I'm asking you to recognize Danielle and to move forward with naming her into the position of assessor of record in addition to her duties as the director of assessing and authorize the supervisor and clerk upon the successful negotiation of her new employment agreement, recognizing that as such, to execute that agreement.
Okay. And Mr. Fike makes that motion?
I'll make a motion, yes.
Motion by Fike?
Supported by Mr. White.
Supported by White on item 7A. Treasurer Yancho?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Seven-nothing, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And now we'll move into our budget presentation. Mr. Limada?
You just give Ms. Roberts just a couple of minutes to plug that presentation in. It'll be up on the screens, and then we'll walk through it.
We have the remotes down there.
Quite the presentation I had in mind.
Your friend is here.
I think you're live. Need the screen sharing, the extension. Tell you what, we'll take a three-minute recess for them, three to five minutes here for them to get set up, and then we'll resume. Okay, we're going to get started in a minute here. If everybody can find a seat or, and we're gonna let that door close so that whoever wants to stay out there and talk can do that. Need back in, I'm sure we'll have somebody to let you back in, but we ask everybody to find, find a seat. They would? Okay. We're going to go ahead and get started with our budget presentation. I'm not sure who's up first. Mr. Limada?
You? Okay. So, as typical this time of year, and you guys have been through this several times, we got a couple new board members, so it will be new to them, of course. All this is, is the broad overview of the fiscal year 2026 Superintendent Recommended Budget, and so that you'll see the high points of it. And then, as typical, as we go through this process, we take one meeting where we go through the overall budget, talk about our revenue projections, any impacts on those, and then the overall department request for budget and my, and my recommended budget based upon the financial constraints that we have. Melissa, go ahead. The requirements for our budgeting process is where we differ from, the public sector differs from the private sector is that formal budgeting is actually required for governmental entities. It's a legal binding on a government agency, and it's adopted by cost center. So what that means is, we adopt it by the various departments, assessing, treasury, you know, parks and recreation, fire, police, whatever. You have to stay within those amounts appropriated for each expenditure by category, and deviations require formal board approval before expenditure occurs. That's important because no money can be shifted between those adopted cost centers once the board has adopted that budget without the board taking a formal action to adjust those funds. So when you're asking about whether we move money between departments, we can, but it's done through the budget amendment process. Government budgets are also revenue-based, because unlike private sector budgets where you could change in the middle of a budget year and potentially increase your revenue by increasing the price of widgets and bringing in some more funds, we can't do that. We make our budget production, our projection usually, you know, comes to the board by September 1st. I put that together, working with Finance Director Kathy Sosak and with Treasury by July of every year, and it's important that we get it right because our funding drives everything. It's how much money we're gonna be able to spend. We can't change it mid-year. It factors a lot of things. Our number-one revenue source is property taxes. So thank you to Danielle, because again, if her assessing department doesn't get it right, we get challenged tax tribunals, things like that, it would throw our entire budget off and force us to make changes. We're usually, our revenue projections are within about 2% every year, so that's been very helpful in order to hit our goals as far as where the money's gonna be spent. All of it is 100% transparent. You heard a question earlier tonight, how do you know where the money's spent? Pay attention during the budget process. They're all available online. You can go back any year. You can look at this year's. We also get audited each and every year. That auditors come in and they say, did we follow the budget like we said we were going to? So all of that stuff is easily transparent and readily available to every citizen or anybody who wants to see it. The financial objective is maximize service delivery to taxpayers while keeping the expenses to an authorized limit. As a township, charter township, you can levy five mils for your operating millage. Then you can have voter-approved up to an additional five mils for your 10-mil cap. So you're very limited. If you're in a city, you can go to 20 mils. So cities obviously have much more latitude than we do. Look at the city of Grand Blank, for example. They have about six more mils to work with than we do. If you gave us six more mils, we'd have $12 million more dollars to work with, with the exact same level of taxation. So it's important to understand that in our budgeting process as a charter township, we have five mils for operating, which is now currently 4.3, 4.2, because the headly rollback, and then additional five mils that are voter-approved. You can't raise anyone's taxes. It's voters that raise the taxes on themselves when they answer that millage question in the affirmative. Go ahead and advance, Melissa. Townships are a statutory government entity. What that means is, the state constitution charges the legislature that determines the powers and duties that townships must provide for essential services. The things that are mandated functions, that we're required to do with the monies that we bring in, tax collection, property assessment, elections administration, and our governmental financial reporting. Those are the mandated functions that you seven are responsible for to make sure that operate in a appropriate manner within the legislature's requirements. The discretionary functions are all the others listed on here. Usually, like when a recession hits, where do we start making cuts? Primarily, we look at parks and recreation. Some people will cut back on libraries. We stopped doing anything with road maintenance. But a lot of those things you need to do. Fire protection has been a big topic tonight. While it's a discretionary function, you don't have to offer it as a township. Clearly, you have to offer it, because in some form or function, you have to provide that for your citizens. Police services. A lot of townships, we're one of the limited few that offer full-service police services. A lot of them just turn that over. If we don't provide any policing services whatsoever, it just goes to the county sheriff is required to provide policing services for the township. But long before I got here, it was made the decision that we were gonna have our own police services, and we do. We've got a fantastic police department, a lot of accolades, one of the first ones accredited in the state of Michigan. I think very proud of our police services, just like we are with our fire department. This is important, because while we say it's discretionary, it is discretionary, but you have to, you have a finite amount of funds. We can't get any more money in mid-year. It's what we have, we have. And you look at some of the things that we compete with, with the county. When you look at that list of functions, parks and recreation, millage, we pay a full mil, or all the taxpayers here pay a full mil to the county for parks and recreation. None of that money comes back to us. We pay a full mil for senior services. We send it over there, and $206,000 comes back to us. We send over $2 million, we get $206,000. There's been talk about the parks and recreation, millage was defeated. It's the end of its 10-year cycle. It was a quarter mil. So a lot of the confusion comes with parks and recreation. Yep, it was presented in the community survey that 57% of the people would like to see a full mil passed. It was presented, it failed. The people either didn't turn out to vote that supported it during the survey last year, or people changed their minds, or the uncertainty of the economy, a lot of things can impact a millage vote. As to the question about how much money was diverted from fire to parks and recreation, that's an easy answer. I don't have to research it. It's zero. You guys don't recall doing any budget amendments to move money from fire to parks and recreation. The millage question had nothing to do with the 2025 funding, and in fact, there will still be the last opportunity for this millage, the quarter mil, to go out in the December tax bill. So in 2026, you'll still have a quarter mil, and you'll see that in the budget, to fund capital improvements and maintenance projects at your parks and recreation. The question is, will you have any money for parks and recreation moving forward, or will it just be completely out of the general fund? Next slide, Melissa. The maintain or increase of budget goals for 2026. Maintain or increase current levels of service to meet Grand Blank Township residents' needs and expectations. Fund board-adopted strategic plan initiatives, including and has been for the 10 years that I've been here, to address unfunded actuarial liabilities. We have taken a 13% retiree healthcare fund that was funded 13% and heading in the wrong direction. It is 99.8% funded. That is through a lot of hard work with our union partners, our, all of our employees, and getting invested into the, the right retiree health funding vehicles, and also because the boards have continued to make it a priority and fund. So any reserves we have over the general fund, we have funded our unfunded liabilities, both in retiree healthcare and in the police pension. You're paying off the sins of the fathers. It was decisions that were made from boards way prior before, till you sat in these seats, but we continue to keep our foot on the gas and make sure that those things, because that is the single, number-one reason why municipalities end up with an emergency manager in charge of them, who has the authority to do a lot of things, like slash contracts and everything else. You guys are doing the right thing, addressing those unfunded liabilities, because you're making sure that there will be funds in order to meet the needs of tomorrow. We're funding the fire department and DPW facility without a tax increase. I think that's also important to address. We're able to do that because of the putting funds aside in the capital projects fund, knowing that this day would come. They're right. Fire station number one is incredibly inadequate, and nobody should've had to stay in there. But when the city decided to go on their own, we had to do something, and we were able to do that and achieve it. This board also put $1.6 million into fire station number two. They talk about the facilities at fire station number two. That wouldn't be possible if you wouldn't have put the $1.6 million into that over 23 and 24. The parks and recreation upgrades, we continue to do it. A short 10 years ago, before that millage was brought forward, we closed the basketball courts because of neglect. We were as part of a parks and recreation commission that consisted of the city schools, city schools and township, and there was deferred maintenance, because when that recession hit, it, it, one of the things that, like I said, you do is you look at your priorities. What are the things we have to fund? What are some things that we can cut back funding on? Parks and recreation was one of them, and it suffered drastically. The improvements out there over the last nine years have been phenomenal. And then the enhanced community engagement, and you see a lot of efforts in that between the beautification and, and others. Expanding economic development opportunities. Thank God for the DDA, because it's allowing us to create a lot of well-paying jobs and taxable value that we get to keep here while it's in the DDA, because those businesses that come and expand in here, that's money that would've, used to be sent to all of the county taxing entities. Now it's kept within the DDA and must be spent on public goods projects, roads, sidewalks, trails, water, sewer expansion, those kind of things. And it's been very successful. You have a DDA that has $900,000 coming in this year that otherwise would've gone to the other county taxing entities. And of course, you have to budget for capital projects. The capital projects list is long. You, we talk about how much money we spend on policing. Well, yeah, when you have, you know, 40 officers out there, they all have to have vehicles to drive. Our fire department, never forget that earlier this year, we, we saved money because we were behind on ordering a truck, and we still have several others coming, but we had a aerial truck that needs to be replaced. I think you heard a firefighter earlier tonight talk about the aerial ladder truck that, you know, needs help. Yeah, and it's a 42-month build-out.
Dennis, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we just pause for a second? All this, this.
I agree.
I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, if you can take that out and disassemble it out in the entry, that'd be appreciated.
Sorry about that, Mr. White. I'm gonna go ahead. So budgeting for capital projects is also very important. One of the things that also happens when you get into an economic downturn is you put less money into your capital projects. That's why we have a five-to-seven-year capital plan in front of us at all times, because we have to go through there and look at all the varying priorities and understand that we're setting aside the capital so that we can operate. We do have to buy new vehicles. We do have to buy, you know, like I said, the aerial truck, that came in at $2.1 million on the bids. We paid a little over $1.8 million for it in advance, because we had the money in capital reserves to do so, saved us over $300,000, and that's a 42-month build-out before we'll even see the truck roll in here. So, you know, when we look at that, it's why it's so important for our budget goals to make sure we're putting aside money appropriately for capital. Go ahead, Melissa. Budget outlook for 2026, great news. 2025 SEV, $2.5 billion, up 6.6% over the prior year. 2025 taxable value, almost $1.8 billion, up 5.87% over the prior year. Grand Blank Township continues to lead Genesee County in SEV and taxable value. We provide 14% of the total taxable value for millage captures in all of Genesee County. Out of 31 municipalities, we provide 14%, and in some particular instances, it's, it's much higher. Challenges remain. Headly rollbacks are always gonna limit revenue from our millage funds. Your millage are gonna continue to roll back each and every year. Proposal A limits growth and taxable value for individual parcels. You see that yourself. If you've owned your home for a long time and you're looking at your taxable value versus your actual true cash value or SEV, you see that your taxable value is down. That's why we hear so much when new homeowners buy into a home and suddenly realize that the taxes are much higher than they were on the prior owner, because the proposal A limits our growth until it's uncapped. Personal property tax losses continue to go down based upon things that occurred out of Lansing. The veterans exemption impacts great legislation, but it does have an impact on your budget. More than $8.6 billion has been diverted away from communities by the state between 2001 and 2016. Well over $13 million for Grand Blank Township. And then we have the increased cost of goods and services, along with our inflation rates. Healthcare impacts everybody, and you know, including Grand Blank Township, our healthcare costs are gonna go up 30% for our healthcare plan is the renewal that we got. We continue to shop for other plans. We're giving alternatives to our employees, but it, you know, those are the kind of impacts that we have. Go ahead, Melissa. State legal requirements for the budget. It's a financial plan, one of the most significant of all. If you've owned your home for a long time and you're looking at your taxable value versus your actual true cash value or SEV, you see that your taxable value is down. That's why we hear so much when new homeowners buy into a home and suddenly realize that the taxes are much higher than they were on the prior owner, because the proposal A limits our growth until it's uncapped. Personal property tax losses continue to go down based upon things that occurred out of Lansing. The veterans exemption impacts great legislation, but it does have an impact on your budget. More than $8.6 billion has been diverted away from communities by the state between 2001 and 2016. Well over $13 million for Grand Blank Township. And then we have the increased cost of goods and services, along with our inflation rates. Healthcare impacts everybody, and you know, including Grand Blank Township, our healthcare costs are going to go up 30% for our healthcare plan is the renewal that we got. We continue to shop for other plans. We're giving alternatives to our employees, but, you know, those are the kind of impacts that we have. Go ahead, Melissa. State legal requirements for the budget. It's a financial plan, one of the most significant of all policymaking opportunities that the seven of you will make in any given year. The budget development process is an important element in strategic planning to achieve the goals and objectives. Some of this is just a legal lease about Uniform Budget and Accounting Act, which establishes how we do things and the way things work. Michigan law provides that no money shall be dispersed from a local unit, except pursuant to the General Appropriations Act adopted by the legislative body. The reason I say this is because that General Appropriations Act is when you guys authorize the budget. If we don't pass this budget and authorize it before the end of the year, we do not have an authority to spend. So come January 1st, we can't expend any funds if this budget hasn't been approved by then. So that's why it's important. Melissa. Our process starts in July, when finance provides the budget work sheet to the departments. Department heads submit requests for their annual operating budget, their capital improvements. They prepare the revenue projections, work, like I said, with Treasury on tax collections, with assessing on our taxable values, and then with me and the finance director sitting down and developing what that looks like, then compiling the department expenditure requests into a budget document. We have review meetings where we meet with every single individual department head, review their requests, and at that time, talk about, you know, is it an essential? Is it a nice to have? Is it a need to have? It goes, budget adjustments are then made to ensure a balanced budget. As your budget manager, I'm required by law to deliver a balanced budget. So I can't advocate deficit spending. I have to give you a budget that is 100% balanced, based on the revenues that we're going to take in on any given year. It is by law to the Board of Trustees by September 1st, and it must be approved before December 31st of each year. Just a brief description on fund types. We deal with two funds here, governmental funds, proprietary funds. It's, think of it as governmental funds are the activities that provide the general government services. General funds, special revenue funds, debt service funds, paying for the police building, for example, or the new buildings, and then our capital projects fund, like I mentioned, where construction, rehab, acquisition of capital assets, everything that we buy that is listed as asset accounts in there. Our proprietary funds or enterprise funds are the Department of Public Works. That is your water fund, your sewer fund. These funds cannot co-mingle. You can't use water sewer funds to supplement your governmental funds. Out of the question, illegal. The enterprise funds are strictly there to support the users of those funds. So when you pay your water bill, your sewer bill, that's where the funds come from for us to finance the acquisition of properties, the maintenance, and it's very strict on how we do that and how we report it. Go ahead, Melissa. This is your general fund 2026 proposed budget, summary of revenues and expenditures by department. You can see the last three years' activity, where we think the 2025 budget's going to end, and then the proposed budget for 2026. When you look across the revenue and you say, wow, general revenue, we went from 16.8 to 21.7 for 2026. Just remember, a lot of what the revenue comes in is when we're doing major projects. So next year, we'll have two, a minimum of two special assessment districts for street repairs. So based into your budget goes the funds that we expect to borrow to pay for those street projects. So when you see this fluctuation in our revenue of general fund, just understand, like, why don't the police and fire have those fluctuations? Ours is bond proceeds going in to support specific projects. You can look at your police revenue. What are they going to bring in? Well, you know that the change was going for an extra half a mil, and that brought in from the, you know, about $2 million to the $3.2 million. Now it's going to be $3.6 million. Your fire revenue has gone from 1.5 million to 1.9 million, strictly on the millage funds that are being allocated, right? So you're bringing in 1.9 million. Since I brought those up, I will point out also what it costs you in your police. The projected budget for 2026, $11.7 million, bringing in 3.6 million in revenue. The rest is supported by the general fund. And with the fire department revenue, fire, 1.9 million will come with millage, but we're proposing a $2.5 million expenditure. I also want to point out, since we've talked a lot about fire tonight, it's important for you guys to understand, the total operating revenue, we split up with the city in operating under the Fire Commission in 2019, the first full calendar year that we operated the fire department, we have grown their operating budget by 92% from 2020 to 2026 proposed budget. 92%. Nobody else's budget here went up 92%. The boards have been financing fire. You heard tonight that there are citizens here that think you should do more of it. I don't disagree. If that's the direction we want to go in, then it's going to require additional funding, and that means you need some millage questions. The reason I bring that up again is, don't forget what I said about, you have 10 mills as a township. Five for your operating, not voter-approved, we can levy five mills to operate. It's the additional five mills. Right now, you have one and a half mills for police, you have one mill for fire, you had a quarter mill for Parks and Recreation, you've got less than a quarter mill for mosquito coverage abatement. So there's a little room left, and if that's important, as we move through, and two weeks from now, when you hear more details about fire, that is the option available to you. There's other avenues, and we'll make sure we discuss those, Public Act 33, but then you can't save funds for capital, for example, if you levy Public Act 33 to everybody to support fire, but it is an option. Increased millage is an option as you start to review if there's another model that you want to go to. But if you take a look, legislative board, finance, township superintendent, elections, again, is elections one that can swing wildly? Legal attorney costs, IT department, building and grounds are the improvements that we typically do here, treasurer's office, you know, again, ARPA funds, we got that shot in the arm, again, $3.8 million of ARPA funds that the federal government allocated for us, and we absolutely took those funds, 3.8 million. I will tell you, 1.6 million went into Fire Station Number Two, 1.2 million went into the new building at Fire Station Number One, out of the 3.8 million dollars that we received in ARPA funds. Next slide, please, Melissa. So again, sometimes it's just easier to look at it as a pie chart, and it kind of gives you an idea of general fund revenues and where our money comes from. Property taxes, again, what's our biggest source of revenue? 51% comes in property taxes. Then you see the other various sources that we bring in money from. Our number-two sources, state sources, that's state revenue sharing, both constitutional and city, village, township revenue sharing. The revenue consensus committee met, and we, you know, and they meet three times a year, and that, you know, we watch it very closely, because we hang on. It's such an important part of our revenue source. 17% is going to come from revenue sharing, based upon state tax collections and what's going to happen with the budget that's just been passed in Lansing. We've been instructed that our revenue sharing, we just lost $160,000 in revenue sharing from what I had already built into this budget, and that's an adjustment I'm going to have to make before we finalize it. Those are things that we really have to watch out for. Next slide, Melissa. The general fund expenditures, again, looking at a pie chart, kind of helps you visualize where the funds go. 43% go to police, you know, 19% go to public services, fire is at 9.37%. You can see the rest, the various split outs that come from that. And then, next slide, please, special revenue fund budgets. We talked about our general fund, then we talk about special revenue fund budgets. We almost treat these like we're thinking of our enterprise funds, that they're standalone, they're not totally coming out of our general fund, but our general fund goes to support these as well. But we keep track of them separately, especially if we have millage funds coming in to take care of it, like Parks and Recreation Fund, $3 million next year. Understand that that $3 million for next year includes what we anticipate to be very large grants to complete some projects that have already been approved by the state, so they're baked in here. So when we say we're going to spend $3 million on Parks and Recreation, why so much, when we only bring in millage funds of a very limited amount, a quarter mil, you know, brings in $400,000, how the heck do we do a $3.2 million? These are huge grant funds that our grant writer and Ms. Roberts, especially Matt Kimmer, Senyalima, worked on to look at our parks, what can we do and what available funds? We use our funds instead to be matching funds. A lot of times, it's about 26%. But that's where that money's coming from. So if somebody reads that and says, wow, $3 million for parks, understand where the source actually came from, and you can find that in the budget document. Our solid waste fund for garbage, we actually have an incredibly great deal from solid waste fund. The amount that we charge for a household, about $170, something like that, Treasury in it for a year, and it comes out in your December tax bill, for that, you get all three pickups of yard waste, recycle, and your solid waste. They run 30, over 33, almost 35,000 trucks in each, every single Wednesday, with those three trucks that go through there during the summer, when we have all three pickups going on. There's 35, just under 35,000 stops, costs us $2.1 million a year. Our building department fund, you really have to treat like an enterprise fund. Building is watched very closely. So our building department, all those permits that we do, all those inspections that we do, critically important. I know sometimes people think it's government overreach, oh, my God, I got to get a permit to do anything, but what really happens, and we had a great presentation last Wednesday at the Grand Blank Township University class from our building official, Ted, and he talked about how many times that they've been in a home to do like a furnace inspection, and they look over and see a water heater and realize that the vent pipes aren't even screwed together, it's put together wrong, and they'll mention it to homeowners who say, oh, my God, we've been suffering from headaches for the last three weeks, we had a neighbor help us install that water heater. Get a permit, get the inspection done, be safe. But we have to account for all of that money in the building department. Our inspection fees are closely regulated. They have to match with what the state allows us, but we're expecting $1.3 million. The PEG funds are cable franchise fees that come to us. Police special funds are different grants of things that we can grab, drug forfeiture funds that are very specific in how they can then can spend those funds. Chief Rennie is an expert at it. He continues to look for ways to use that money appropriately, and you also, we have all of the opioid capture that we're getting in those opioid settlements, and they go through, and they have to be spent very specifically on opioid or drug addiction in our community. Important funds, that opioid settlement fund. Our DDA debt fund, what's that recognizes is that we borrowed some funds so that we could complete Baldwin Road from the Dorde Highway up to Ruby Street. That was critically important to borrow those funds, but we matched it up with an ungodly amount of grant funds as well. Again, money that would have been getting sent out to all the county agencies of staying here and allowed us to upgrade that road, which allowed us to open up Enterprise Park, which created all those businesses in there, including Fessler Bowman's World Headquarters, Global Technologies, JP O'Sullivan, congratulations on the Yingling distributorship, JP O'Sullivan, one of the first ones in Michigan to be able to do that distribution. Our municipal campus project fund, this primarily goes to pay for the police department bonds from when they built that building, and now some funds, $250,000 to $225,000 in 2026 towards the new fire station. And then our capital projects fund, $12.9 million. Wow, that sounds like a lot of money. It is. It's the new building. It's bond funds. We've already gone out for the bond, and these are funds that we're accounting for in 2026 that will go towards completing the construction. So what's our next steps? The board will review all department budgets for appropriate expenditures, just like you do every single year, in line with your stated objectives of service delivery. You can make, you know, any requested changes delivered, and we will update the proposed budget sheet. We still have a lot of weeks to work through this. I think it's important, you know, you've heard a lot of questions raised about fire. What a great opportunity, because we're right in the middle of our fiscal year 2026 annual budget. If you take the time to have a full hearing about fire, maybe there are changes that you're going to want to make in this budget, but I will caution you, kind of like, why can't we move? You heard a lot of it saying a couple of things about fire tonight. You know, we're not in compliance with NFPA 1710. 1710 applies to career departments, where a combination department, it doesn't apply to us, but 1720 does, and we should continue to strive to be the best. You know, when I talked to Chief Janet yesterday, he told me that he recognized that 1710 doesn't apply to us, but he also recognizes that as a firefighter and as a fire chief, everybody's continually pushing to be the top, the best, and I don't think there's a person in this room that disagrees with that, but you also just understand that you have budgetary constraints. If you agreed right now to move forward and add the personnel that it sounds like we critically need, is what you're hearing, just understand that if you put the millage question out now, that millage question would go out into 2026 ballot, it would go out on the December 2026 tax bills. The first time that you'll have revenue to actually been able to enact the changes that have been requested will be in March of 2027. It's a process. It's just how municipal financing works. I can't encourage you to spend money you don't have, but we can do it very strategically. Look at it, look about if there's a changing service model that you want to adopt, and just know that it's a process, and it's a two-year process before we can get the funding in place to do the things. If you just want to rebalance the budget, again, you can look at it. The vast majority of your budget, we deliver services. It's what we do as a municipality. We deliver services to our taxpayers and our residents. We do that through people. When you look at each individual department, and I've been asked this a lot over my career doing this, well, why don't you just do like a 10% cut across all departments and shift it over to another department? Sounds easy, right? If we just said, everybody cut your budget 10%? Well, understand that we deliver services through people. The vast majority, and I broke this down for two boards ago to show them, and it was between like 72 and 94% of all expenditures are personnel. So when you say, just cut it, we're talking about cutting personnel. Well, I have a cashier and a deputy treasurer and a treasurer. I can't really cut a position and have them still function. I can't cut the clerks department, because I wouldn't be able to run elections, and I have to. I can't cut assessing, I can't cut people out of there, because then I won't be able to comply with my 20% of properties that are inspected every single year, plus all the new builds. So you look at, where can you make cuts? And are there some jobs? Well, I guess we could eliminate Parks and Recreation, for example. It won't bring in as much as you think in order to do what you want to do, and I think it's one of those things that nobody steps up and delivers Parks and Recreation for you. It's one of the things that, as a government, that we really do have to do. It's a discretionary item. It's not a mandatory item, but tell that to the folks who want to live here, because it has to do with their home values, it has to do with making this a sense of place. We run a lot of community programs. Those are tough decisions, but it's the decisions that the seven of you have to make. I'm here to present, and then if you tell me that you want to see other options, I'll reshuffle and show you what I can do, but that's why the budget is the single most important thing that you do as a member of this board, is you're directing those funds. And we all need more money. We all don't want to pay higher taxes, right? I mean, how many people in the room want to pay higher taxes? Nobody. Nobody ever volunteers to pay higher taxes, but we're willing to pay when we see a value in that tax. We will hold a truth in taxation public hearing. It needs to be announced. We have to put it out in advance. So as we work more through this, I need to know what day, what meeting you want to adopt the budget, and then the public hearings and budget adoption, we just, we have till December 31st. So at any meeting that's scheduled already, or a special meeting, but we're, you know, kind of coming towards the end of October, you still have, you know, a lot of time, 60 days to work through what your final budget's going to look like for 2026. Now, my recommendation, moving forward from here, this was the big broad overview, I have, the departments are all here tonight, and if you have individual, specific questions, any one of them can stand up and answer that question for you. Everybody's rented here from clerk, treasury, DPW, IT, Parks and Recreation, planning, fire, you name it, human resources, finance, everybody's here and can answer a question, or if you'd like to talk to them about scheduling something on how we move forward. We know that in two weeks, we've already chosen the fire department to move forward. If you'd like to add another department to that, like police, and do police If you'd like to add another department to that, like police, and do police and fire in the same night, it's totally at the board's discretion. You just need to let us know how you'd like.
Mr. Limita, I know you touched on this a little bit in your presentation, and thank you for the presentation. When a department head comes to you with their budget and you sit down, what's the process? Because I imagine hardly anybody asks for more money than the previous year, right?
Yeah, I mean...
How does that work? I mean, is that, hey, what, you know, what gives there?
I tried to address it initially with the information that I send out, as well as Kathy Sostak, our finance director. We send it out to these guys, kinda talking about, you know, we might be like when it was really tight, when we were climbing out of a recession, and remember, we can lose it in three years, but it took us 14 years to get back to our funding level. And so we...
You might say that again, because I'm not sure everybody's on top of that.
When the recession hits, you can lose your value, 2007. We had negative values for four years. It's about five years, because it was just break even, but we dropped in that time. We lost about 35 to 40% of our taxable value across Grand Lake Township. So your home, for those of you who had to sell a home during that time, you got it. Your taxable value dropped, the value of, you know, for most of us, the single biggest purchase we ever made, dropped. But then as the recession ebbs and we start to come back, then you can start seeing those positive values that get applied, you know, based upon sales data, neighborhood conditions. Our assessors are out there taking a look at that. It comes back very, very slowly, because we can only grow at the rate of inflation or 5%, you know, whichever is lower. So it was, you know, inflation was low, we were coming back at 1%, whatever. It took 14 years, even though we were new growth, new commercial growth, a bunch of new residential growth out at Grand Reserve, all of those new homes coming in, our taxable value, it took 14 years to get back to 2007 levels. So 2021, we finally hit the taxable value. Calls for service were way up. Our costs for everything was way up. We had so many more residents, so calls for service for police, for fire, all went up. Our healthcare costs, as everybody knows who's had to pay for their own healthcare costs, went up. It 14 years to get back to where we were in 2007, but we didn't cut any services at all during that time. We may do with less and continue to move forward. So we've really only been back at 2007 levels. We hit that in 2021. Now we've had some good years of growth, but a lot of that, thank God, to the DDA is attracting those new businesses, but we get the same taxes from there. Yes, we're getting it in our DDA, but it doesn't come to our general fund until later.
So how does that work with a department head that comes to you that, you know, I imagine a couple of them come to you each year and have a little bit more that they need than the previous year?
I've learned my lesson from just saying, you can ask for whatever you want. You know, you don't do that, but it's like, hey, we have a very minor projected growth. We may have revenue, we may be looking at revenue growth of 5% for the year. Keep that in mind as you put your budget asks together. If you need a new position or fund a new position, then you need to bring, you have to have really good documentation on why that would be required, right? So you go through and you continue to ask, you know, what's the purpose of it? What will it do? So, you know, they have to, when they put their budgets together, they're putting it together knowing that, and yeah, they're gonna ask for more because it's human nature, number one, and there may be some things that they've deferred, or trainings that they haven't been able to go to, so they'll build their budget. Then when we sit down, when Kathy and I and Matt Melissa now sit down with them and we review where, what their asks are, we have to go through and really ask a lot of questions. What happens if we don't? What happens if we do? You know, how important is it? And we take everybody's asks, but we're not really making cuts at that time. It's when we get everybody's together, when we put the whole thing together. Kathy takes everybody's asks, and we build the budget, and you'll see in your budget books, the department head requested budget, and then you'll see next to it, the superintendent recommended budget. That's because I have to balance it. I have to balance those shifting priorities. I have to deliver to you a balanced budget. And Kathy and I will work, as we get down to the end, we know that you, you know, the board has given us a mandate that there's gonna be money on unfunded liabilities every single year. So we work to try to come up. This year was particularly tough. We finally ended up with maybe $400,000 towards the retiree healthcare to still build per your direction through the strategic plan, but it was really tough. We just didn't have the revenue stream. So you go through, and that's how we balance it. We take those department requests. I go back to them and say, I wasn't able to fund this. They also have capital improvement plans that they request. I go back and say, you'll have to drive those vehicles for another year. I can't fund it. There's just not enough money in capital for all the requests. So it's always a balancing act. So by the time you get it, we've been working through it for, you know, they have July to put it together. August, we go through nonstop meetings for a month of back and forth cuts. What can we fund? What can't we fund? And then when we deliver it on September 1st, that's the budget that you see with my recommended column on it. The next column, obviously, is the board-approved budget, and that's where, based upon our conversations as we move forward, we make those adjustments, and that ends up as the board-approved budget in its final.
Why is it important to pay down the unfunded liabilities? And what happens if we don't do that?
Unfunded liabilities, like I said, are the number one reason that places, you don't have to look very far, look at the city of Flint, why do they end up in so much trouble? Why isn't an emergency manager come in and had the ability to make some decisions and take it away from the elected officials who ran the city of Flint? It's because of unfunded liabilities. You saw the state step in last year because Flint was in serious trouble again, and they said, if we don't get $350 million, then we're not gonna be able to meet our obligations. We're in danger of not being able to pay our bills. We'll go bankrupt again. So the state found them $250 million and sent it in there to them, right? Where it goes, I don't know. That's a question for someone else. But you look at that, it's one of the things, it's the, when you look all across the state and look at communities that got in trouble, it's because they ignored it. And this went back, especially back into the 90s, 80s and 90s, it was real easy. When municipalities wanted to settle union contracts, for example, it was real easy to give benefits. Benefits were cheap. Yeah, we'll give you healthcare for life. We'll do all this. But then they didn't set aside the money to actually be prepared to pay for those when the bills came due. And so you didn't get in trouble. When I first got here in 2015, one of the first conversations I had, as I had them, we looked at the retiree healthcare OPAB actuarial valuation, and we went through it. And Kathy had been here for about, I don't know, 10 months before I got here. I sat down with her, we talked. We're like, all these assumptions don't even match up. So we had them rerun it and put the actual assumptions in so you could see where we were at. And we were 13% funded, and it was heading in the wrong way. We were getting less and less funded. But I remember one particular board member at the time who said, yeah, but the auditors have never said anything about it, so we're okay. And it's true. Auditors don't look to see if you're being smart with your money. They look to see if you're following government financial standards, right? And that's what they're here to do, to make sure that you're doing the things you're supposed to do. But if you don't fund and take care of those bills, like not paying your credit card, that monster continues to grow and grow and grow. And we were thinking that we weren't paying anywhere near the annual required payment to make any progress whatsoever. That finally changed in 2016, 2017. So the progress that we made really came about from 2017 to current. And we've erased the retiree healthcare debt, and you still can't take your foot off the gas. You still need to put money on it. Because even though we say we're 100% funded or 99.8% funded, that's all actuarially snapshot based upon returns. Returns change. People live longer. They put different places, things like that into place, and you're like, oh, that changed, they've adopted it. So same thing with police pension. What's the most important thing we can do for our police officers? What was the most important thing we could do for the healthcare for those employees? Nobody gets it since 2017. We eliminate all those. We no longer offer that benefit, but we made promises to people who came and worked for us for 20 years, or with the promise that, man, if you work for us for 25 years, we're gonna cover your retiree healthcare for life. What a horrible thing to not live up to our promises. If we had done that, and when I got here is what I promised all the unions when I did negotiate the contracts, is I will guarantee you that we will live up to our promises, but it's gonna take some work. We're gonna have to shut it off to new hires. You guys are gonna have to pay a little bit in retirement. We're gonna have to set aside some more funds to do it. So some of the things that you hear that would be great, like, let's build more pathways. It'd be great if we had an interconnected community. I couldn't agree more. It would be great, but it would be irresponsible if we didn't take care of the unfunded liabilities first, so that we do have money to do those things later.
Mr. Fight?
I have a question about parks. Let me get this straight. We did a survey of residents, and they said parks are our top priority. We want better parks. We'll pay for more parks. We put a millage out for a mill. Voters said no. That quarter mill will expire next year.
This is the last time we're sending it out in December.
So when is the date that quarter mill will expire?
So it really expires with this year. It's the end of 2025, it's over. But it will go out in, on the December tax bill as the last of the 10-year millage.
So our general fund has to eat that?
Well, if you wanna continue the same operations of your parks, yes.
So either we cut back on parks, or we go for another millage?
I agree.
We're gonna have to make the hard decision as a board. What should we do? We love our parks. Parks are important, but the money is gonna go away next year.
Well, you've heard, Mr. Limita, I mean, we can't raise the price of widgets. What we can do is we can, you know, pass a millage for any department or any service. We can take money from one department in our budget and move it to another before we approve our budget, which means cutting some other service.
We have some options.
I'm not suggesting that's an option that I would like to do, but, and then, you know, a millage, putting it back on the ballot is the other option. So, yes.
Through you, Mr. Supervisor, to Mr. Limita. Okay, you've mentioned, touched on a number of things, but just to summation, kind of develop the record here. Okay, you mentioned 12.9 million dollars. That's, it was, that's the, that's the capital expenditure for the new...
For 2026, capital expenditures, but that includes, you know, any other equipment, vehicles, anything that would have been capitalized, but the vast majority of that is bond proceeds being spent for the new bill.
For the new, for the new, for the new fire hall?
Yeah, a lot of it.
Okay. And that fire hall includes the newest technologies for a fire hall, including employee safety, firefighter safety, cleanliness, all the things that...
You know, also police vehicles, because we have to replace so many of those. I mean, it's not, you look at that fire station, we're building that thing for about eight and a half million dollars all in for fire, but we already put 1.2 million dollars offset with ARPA funds, and then about another $2 million that was already in our campus capital reserves. So we really only needed, you know, like $5 million to build the fire department. So it was done very, very conservatively.
Okay. And the 92% was from 2020 to 2026? That's a 90% increase in operations?
Just in operating funds, yes. Not capital funds.
And what was the, what was the construction cost for the improvements that we made on the Baldwin Road?
1.6 million dollars.
And that was for accommodations for firefighters to be there?
Two big goals were accomplished with 1.6 million dollars on Fire Station Number Two. It was really built to be a fire station that was there for on-call firefighters. Basically, our timer, our on-call, went there, it wasn't designed, it didn't have sleeping quarters, and it didn't even have the newest technology when it comes to, one of the biggest things for firefighter safety, cancer is really high on firefighters because of the carcinogens that they pick up that goes on turnout gear. You have to have a way to deal with that for them and to keep them safe, so that's not coming back in, going back into the station house. So we were trying to make improvements, critical improvements in there, and so it required not just a remodel, but an expansion. So we built in, we put a gym for, you know, obviously, health and welfare. The sleeping quarters were put in, and so then some, allowed us to make some other changes as well.
And with regard to the aerial truck, I remember that the initial cost was, I thought it was over $2 million, but then through your efforts and Deputy Chief Miracle mentioned to me, I think we're down to 1.8 million for that?
It was just over 1.8 million dollars that we wrote a check for because it allowed us, we could have financed, we could have done some other things, but then that would have driven the costs up higher, obviously. By paying for it in advance, we saved over 300, like $350,000 by paying for it upfront. And like I said, it's a 42-month minimum build out before we even see the truck come through the door.
I know you're gonna, you're going to elaborate on this further in a few weeks, and I know you'll put a finer point on all of this, but I just, I thought it was important to kind of summarize some of the things that have been mentioned. And then also, another question, I know, you know, we are mutual, we provide, we're involved with mutual aid, our agreements with our partner neighborhood and communities. How much do we provide to others, and how much do we receive in return? Do we have information on that, or can that be made available?
It will. If you look back at your annual reports, they always give you those numbers and updated. I don't wanna put Deputy Chief Miracle on the spot here, but, you know, it, we give much more than we receive when it comes to mutual aid, I can assure you, but I don't know the exact numbers.
It's in the annual report. Yeah. It's actually in the annual report. I've seen it recently. Mr. Yoncho?
Thank you very much.
Yes, if we were to pass a millage, let's say a one-mill increase for a fire department, what would that mean for staffing?
What would it raise, first off?
How much would it raise, and what would that mean?
It depends. If you, if you did an additional mill, it would bring in potentially about $2 million of revenue in. And then, you know, when Chief Gant's projections even for what we would do for the Safer Grant, for example, you know, by year three, it was about 1.4 million dollars, still discounted to add the 13 firefighters that he was looking for. By the time you hit that year three projection, and again, they, you know, they cover a bigger portion of it, and I don't, I can't quote it, but like 70% the first year, and whatever the second year. The third year, you take on more of it. The fourth year, it's all yours. But it was about 1.3, 1.4 million dollars anticipated for 13 firefighters while it was still being discounted. So does it mean we could add 13 or 14 firefighters? Potentially.
Full-time?
Yeah, everything he had base was all full-time.
Mr. Lim?
Are we hiring firefighters right now?
The ad is out. It is on human resources. I don't know where those are. That's really, that's a combination of human resources and the fire department administration that work at recruiting firefighters.
How many are we budgeted for?
40.
40 part-time?
40 total, right? Kind of like 40 firefighters, and that's, we got six career firefighters, so you're budgeted for 40.
Okay.
And I don't know what we have currently.
Six full-time and 28.
Six full-time and 28 part-time. So we have available positions right now for firefighters.
Thank you.
Mr. Limita, can you just briefly touch on again, you know, we, the amount of mills we're allowed for operating versus voter-approved, and where are we at on both of those? And what could we potentially raise those?
So as, and I wish I had the 4029 in front of me, and I don't, but, and I can certainly get that for you, but statutorily, as a charter township government, you have five operating mills. It's not voter-approved as a charter township. General law would be different, but we're a charter township. We can levy five mills. And again, had they rolled back, I think we're around 4.3, 4.289, something like that, because it's rolled back. But you can levy that five mills, and then you can have voter-approved additional five mills up to your 10-mill cap.
So we still have some room in the voter-approved?
Yeah, there's still some room available. Like I said, 1.5 for police, one mill for fire currently, you know, your, a couple others, Parks and Recreation, mosquito.
So really, when we look at, you know, what's a misnomer, I know many people look at their tax bill and they see, oh, we have, you know, X mills for police.
look at their tax bill, and they see, oh, we have, you know, X mills for police. Well, the general fund is contributing to it as well. And it's not just that millage that's going towards the different departments. So I think, what is 17% of, of everybody's property tax actually goes to the township. The rest goes throughout the county.
Through the power of an incredibly helpful staff that's sitting there behind me, 4.3 mills for your operating, 1.48 is rollback for police, .13 for mosquito, .9649 for fire, and .2382 for your parks and recreation, is your total millage capture that will go out on the tax bills for December.
Mr. White?
I just had, going back to the fire discussion, what do the part-time or on-call, what are the equivalent? Are they like, would they be considered like a quarter of a full-time?
Less really, because when you try, whenever you try to find like apples-to-apples comparison when you're dealing with fire departments, it's tough, because they, they're just all different. They're all over the place. You got career, you got combination. Combinations are different. One of the things that you see with our part-time is our contract with the MAFF requires our part-time firefighters to take a minimum of two shifts in a month, right? So they have to, they have to comply. They have to sign up for two shifts in a month. So when you think about it, if we have these firefighters, but they're only working two shifts, if they just work their minimum, then you can see the gap there, right? So hard for me to say that it's a .25 equivalent, if, you know, but then you've got some guys who will try to max out. They can work up to, you know, 1,560 hours in a year. And it gets towards the end of the year, and these guys have been grabbing shifts like there's no tomorrow. And then we have to, like, talk to the fire administration to say, hey, you might have to slow these guys down a little bit, just be, just because they're starting to bump up against the max that, that they can work to stay compliant with the Affordable Care Act.
30, 30 hours a week on average?
Yeah.
Mr. Yoncho?
With the new fire station we're building, and the accommodations, and the, and the accommodations at fire station number two, how many firefighters can we handle?
Without me remembering how many rooms, I think it's six in this one, and how many are in two?
Four in the other.
Four in the other. So we would have 10 sleeping quarters available. But we also have some really nice recliners.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
All righty.
Okay. Well, this isn't the end of our budget discussion, but just kind of beginning.
Again, as more questions come up, the team's right here. They're ready to answer questions, or do research for you. All you have to do is reach out to any one of them as questions pop up. We have fire scheduled for next time. I still think we should maybe include police, but it depends on if, you know-
If we have time, but I would like to also do a deeper dive into police.
Because I think it just gives the board the opportunity to get some good questions answered about our operations, and make sure that we're delivering the operation model that you guys want.
And I know there's some questions that we heard tonight, too, you know, regarding police budget versus fire, and what have you. And I'd like to explore that a little bit more in, in the presentation.
Absolutely.
Mr. Yoncho?
Without digging into the actual budget, it seems to me like the police had a bigger ask than what's in the superintendent's recommendation. Is that correct?
They did. I had to cut back both in capital and some other options they were asking for.
Okay. All right, with that, must any board members have any other concerns that you want to bring up?
Board reports?
And we will, we'll talk about having, having the police and the fire do presentations. We'll see what kind of time it looks like that we'll need for fire. But we definitely want to have fire in two weeks. And time allows, we'll, we'll schedule police the same evening. So, and also, if they're able to be ready. I know you guys have been extremely busy, so we don't want to put more on everybody's plate at this point. But we do want to explore them fully. With that, anything else, Mr. Limita, on budget?
That's it on budget.
Okay. Future agenda items, I think we know what we're going to be talking about at our next meeting. So with that, I'm not sure anybody has any reports tonight.
I have another question.
Yes.
Are we still offering mental support for the people that were involved at the tragedy?
Absolutely. We, we have an employee assistance program in place, but we don't believe it was adequate enough for the trauma that these heroes faced on that, on that horribly tragic day. We continue to look to expand those offerings. The, the counselor that came in, that came in from Arizona, was absolutely phenomenal, recommended by Oakland County. We would, we tried to figure if we couldn't keep a way to make her available, because we had so much good feedback from both police and fire, who had worked with her. We're still trying to work through that to see if it's possible. But, you know, Colleen has been working as human resources manager, to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and, and will continue to change whatever we need to change to get the assistance that we need.
And just regarding that, just a brief update, you probably have seen the flyers and what have you for our victim compensation fund. Mott Foundation, Community Foundation of Greater Flint, the ALGA Foundation for Impact have all been working together. The chief, myself, Bishop from the church, and I think it was, I mean, Mental Black, who else joined us?
Lieutenant Swartz.
Lieutenant Swartz. We met at ALGA this past week, and awarded a number of individuals with assistance. That fund, you know, you wonder what we're going to be doing with it. But part of it is just for that, Mr. Yoncho, is that if there's, you know, the counselor, or the therapist that we brought in from Arizona, I happened to hear her on WGR speaking, and this is not something that people get over. This is something that is with people for the rest of their life, and it can be our first responders as well that, that carry this. And it's not about getting over it. It's about being able to work through it. And that's what we want to be able to provide for, you know, several years. And so that fund, we're hopeful, and it is growing. But those are the kinds of things that we'll have a, an ongoing effort to, to help with people. I mean, both the people that were at the church, and our other people that were affected, our first responders. Anything, okay, yes.
Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss a written legal memorandum.
Okay. Support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Yoncho?
Okay, motion by myself, supported by Mr. Yoncho. And that requires a record roll call. Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Treasurer Yoncho?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
No.
Okay. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Feig?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
6-1, that motion passes.
Thank you. We will meet in the room over here.
Still, folks, you know, I think you might want to go to conference room, right behind.
All right.